Okay, good evening everyone. I hereby call to order the June 2018 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. At this time, I ask that you please rise and join me for the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We will begin with a Village Clerk's report, please. Clerk Bruno.
Yes, there were three payrolls that were processed. The other clerk attended one planning board meeting. Eight hundred and eight, trash tags for soul. And Wednesday, July 4th, the clerk's office will be closed in observance of any contest.
Thank you very much. Trustees, we have two sets of minutes in your binders. You've had the chance to review. This is May 16th regular board meeting and the May 16th workshop. I will speak about the June 13th public hearing minutes in a moment, but right now I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the May 16th board meeting and workshop. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, just want to let folks know, I think most of you were at the June 13th public hearing, obviously at 2:40 with 93 people and a lot of comments. I've instructed the clerk to take her time and go very thoroughly. She's reviewing the footage from Panda and even when she submits a draft to us, the board, I want everyone to do a very careful review. It's so important that the minutes from that hearing are complete and accurate. So normally, the clerk's able to get our minutes turned around pretty quickly, but obviously that's a Herculean task. So they should be coming out next time we do. Moving on to a treasurer's report. All right, we have two treasurer's reports. So because our fiscal year ends on May 31st, but we still get some invoices, in June we do two abstracts. We do essentially mid-May to the 31st and then we do June 1st to yesterday. So this month, we have two reports, and that's Abstract 13 of the 2018 fiscal year, in which we spent, out of the general fund, sixteen thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars, out of the water fund, ten thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars and three cents, and out of sewer fund, twelve hundred ninety-six dollars and three cents, for a grand total of twenty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty cents. And in Abstract 1 of our new fiscal year, we have the general fund, fourteen thousand, we have spent fourteen thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents, out of the water fund, four thousand three hundred thirty-one dollars and sixteen cents, and out of the sewer fund, two thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars and eighty-one cents, for a grand total of twenty-one thousand three hundred eighty dollars and seventy-one cents. And the total of both abstracts is forty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. I want to thank Treasurer Ronnie Day for all that work and ask if there's a motion to accept the treasurer's reports.
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So our treasurer's reports are accepted for Abstracts 13 and 1. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bills may be paid. Moving on to the zoning report. Trustee Israedi, please.
It looks like our court enforcement officer, John Fenton, was busy this month. He issued, he reviewed and issued three building permits, conducted eight inspections, investigated and submitted two complaints, issued eight zoning violations, which consisted mostly of failure to remove garbage cans and high grass appearance tickets. He, there were no court hearings, but they are scheduled, all hearings are scheduled for July 16th, so were none this month, but will be for July 16th. He also completed, completed two municipal searches and surprisingly didn't indulge in prior inspections. He made a couple of requests of the board, sidewalk sign law and the hiring of a plan inspector.
Thank you, Trustee Israedi. We've had some discussions with our business association, Tivoli Merchants and Artists, and also Mr. Fenton. Currently sidewalk side sandwich boards are prohibited, and we're talking about maybe looking at that, seeing if we shouldn't accommodate them with certain controls so that they don't become a problem. A number of our businesses have long looked for that, so it's something that the board will probably start considering and will probably send it through our zoning review committee.
Awesome.
Okay, so that was the zoning report. At this time, we usually open the floor for public comment on agenda items. I'll do a quick overview so you know what we're talking about. We have a number of budget modifications, and these are end of fiscal year 18, the final jockeying of funds from one line to another, kind of housekeeping at the end of the fiscal year. We are going to announce a sidewalk contract to do, it's going to work out to about 260 feet of new sidewalk east of the bridge going out toward where the county finished by the bridge and going up the hill. And we're trying to work our way out to Clay Hill Road, which we can't do in one year, but we think we can do 260 feet this year. Authorizing a grant application for the waterfront stabilization project. This was down at our waterfront parcel where we've seen tremendous erosion of our property down there, which obviously threatens our future park and to protect our asset there. And it's also a place where perhaps we have common interest with the railroad because the erosion is heading for their tracks as well. Last year, we applied under the CFA Consolidated Funding Application Grant Program for about $450,000 grant, which would allow us to stabilize that shoreline and prevent further erosion. We were unsuccessful last year, although we believe we came close, and so we're proposing to try again for that same grant program with a few tweaks, excuse me, based on our debriefing with Department of State and why we were not successful last year. And we have declaring intent to serve as lead agency for the wastewater system. So as many of you know, we've sort of been advancing the water system projects, which is the transfer improvements, that's sort of out in motion, and now we're getting the sewer, sewer system project, the transfer and improvements going. So the first thing we have to do is declare intent to serve as lead agency under SEACER that gets circulated to a number of parties, and then when we hear back from them or don't in 30 days, we can declare lead agency. So that would be that resolution. And lastly, review and determinations of the water system project. So since public hearing, we've also received quite a bit of correspondence since then, which has been distributed to the board. The review is ongoing and based on circulation of our original EAF, Environmental Assessment Form, and CAF to the planning board, who also serves as our LWRP Consistency Board, Local Waterfront Revitalization Program. We sent EEF and CAF over to them, and they sent it back to us with some comments. And so we are going to propose to, to narrow the alternatives that we're putting into that and send it back to them for, what is it substantive?
For an initial and substantive review.
An initial and substantive review. And what we are going to propose is to pull the CET tank, the composite elevated tank, which is the cement one, out from both locations, and also to pull the ground mounted pump tank out of the park location. So we have a revised EAF and CAF that we're going to send back to the planning board, which is going to ask them to review a multi-leg which is at, at the park location and a multi-leg which is at or, and/or ground mounted pump tank at the McKnight location. So is there any public comment on those five items? And of course, we can talk about them again at the end, but we like to let people talk before we vote.
All right, so Dan Povell, one Clay Hill Road. So Joel, thanks so much for the explanation as to what's going on, and also again, thanks so much for the efforts the village has made to notify people and get everyone, get all their comments, and I was actually, I thought 93 people at that meeting was great because it allows the village, allows you as a board trustee to really hear the concerns.
Absolutely.
Couple of questions I just had and some follow-up from the, from the public hearing. So the EAF that you submitted, did you submit an EAF for both sites or just for one site?
It's an EAF that covers both sites.
Both sites, okay. And so this, so, and I, it was unclear to me, were, this is a type one, is this, have we classified this as a type one action?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So a couple of things, I, you know, I had, had a chance to go back and review some of the documents that have been prepared here. And again, I brought some of this up at the, at the meeting that we had at the public hearing. Just wanted to reiterate some of this, but also focus in a little bit more. You know, I'm referring to your memo from council from April 19, 2017, where they made a few recommendations within there. One was to get a survey of the ball field to determine whether the well is located on the piece that is dedicated parkland or not. I just want to encourage the board to really do that. I think that would be well worth it and that it would allow the board to really fully understand what we're looking with at that site. I also want to note that council recommended it would be in the best interest of the town to grant a lease or an easement to the water authority. I want to reiterate that if there seemed to be, to grant a lease or an easement to the water authority at the ballot as opposed to a fee interest. I just want to reiterate again that, you know, there was a number of comments I heard. I wasn't able to be there for the whole public hearing, but there's a number of comments I heard regarding the preference of the community to see an easement rather than a fee interest go to the water authority, and I think that's in the best long-term interest of the, of the village. Interestingly, within that same memo, the council made some SEACER recommendations at the tail end of it, which I thought were, sorry, I'm going off my phone.
Sure.
That I thought were interesting in regards to, you know, this, this being a type one action because the majority of the village is located within the historic district, that the SEACER view would be required with respect to construction of new improvements regardless of whether they're constructed by the village or the authority, and that any review would need to make, make sure that we're consistent with the LWRP. I wasn't sure where things were at with the LWRP, so I'm, pardon to hear that that's being considered.
Right.
You know, while, while neither lot where the tower or the tank is going to go is technically in the historic overlay district, there is, you know, considerations for development that may happen on property that is in the historic overlay district, such as the access road and whatnot going through McKnight, through McKnight Field. A couple of other things, you know, I, I talked about in my letters to you about doing some due, for more, did some more due diligence on McKnight to make sure that we're not endangering any, you know, endangered species, making sure that this is, you know, this is not an archeological sensitive area. I'm not sure if the EAF mapper showed anything on that. I haven't seen anything in that. In regards to well quality, you know, what I saw, both sites, those of both sites produce seven gallons per minute. It appeared, I guess the park site, there's sulfur smell to that, which is why it's used less as compared to the McKnight field, but in terms of production capacity, both sites are relatively the same. Topography of both sites are, you know, height is relatively the same. So with that, trying to look at, because we've got two, we've got two viable options here. One of the things that I was concerned about is that we don't have any cost comparisons between the two sites. We had cost comparisons between the two, between the three different tank styles, but I didn't see anything in there regarding, is it more expensive to do in the village?
So I can answer that. So yes, we do have an analysis of that, and any of the three tanks is $100,000 cheaper at McKnight.
Okay. If I could, if I could shoot me that or something like that, I would just like to see that.
Yep.
Because I couldn't see that in any of the materials.
Yeah, it's actually, it's not easy to see necessarily, because I know you weren't at the May 17th forum, but upstairs where we have the photos, and each of them has a price tag, you'll see, for example, that the CET at the park and the CET at McKnight, you'll see $100,000 difference, and that's consistent from each tank style between the two locations, yes.
Okay, all right. And then the last thing I want to say as well, I know that moving the tank from the park to McKnight may offer more potential option, potential options for greater develop, greater use of the park as it is. I really think, as a resident, I really think that our greatest asset for the future for a park is a waterfront park, and I would really like to see the village make a greater investment within a waterfront park, considering the residents that have moved in within our village over the last several years. I think a waterfront park would be tremendously used by our residents.
Yeah, I mean, we're literally applying again.
Yeah, so I encourage, yeah, I encourage you on that, great. And I mean, that's, you know, I know that moving the tank, you know, may create some opportunities there for the park, but I mean, again, I have young kids, we're at that park quite a bit. I know it's somewhat underutilized, and, you know, Red Hook doesn't really have, you know, you have to go to Germantown really to get to the closest river from the park. I think that this part coupled with the rumors of a village-to-village trail would create, you know, a huge asset for our community.
Yeah, I mean, I've, before I was even a trustee, I got on that waterfront committee and was quickly made the chair. I mean, I've been working on it for eight or nine years, and I hope that we can win this stabilization grant because that's kind of the, from there, we can go forward.
Yeah.
If we don't, you know, we can't build a park, so I hope that comes through. And just on the, the surveying of the, of the ballot and where that well is, we're, we're absolutely, absolutely planning to do that.
Okay, great.
It's essential to answer the alienation of park question.
Great, okay, perfect. There wasn't clearly any of that, and so, thanks.
The waterfront park feels like an issue, but in fact, the acquisition of that land took 25 years, and that occurred in 2010, and then the work that's been done subsequently on design, so we're, we've been working on it for about 33 years.
And I realize, I guess, I guess the point is, is the point I'm making is, I know we only have so many dollars as a little village, and as a resident, my preference would be see dollars spent on waterfront park because I, that's just the asset I see really, making our village stand up even more.
Right, I see. Mr. Walsh?
How far off, how many years off are we from a waterfront park? Let's be realistic.
Well, this is all speculation. If we win this shoreline, shoreline stabilization grant, that work could probably happen within two years, and then we have the plans drawn up, so I can't see it happening quicker than five years, under best conditions. But again, I've on the crystal ball, so it's not going to be next year, that's for sure.
This, this part, we're talking about this water thing again, and as this resident's opinion, that's the centerpiece of our community, all right? Plain and simple. And there's, there's going to be no money spent there if you remove it. The tower's got to come down no matter what, correct?
Yes.
So, and that, what money's going to be spent? I don't understand what this gentleman's talking about.
Well, I think he's making the point, well, I don't want to speak for you, sir, but I, I understand what he's talking about, which is just if it's a matter of spending money at the riverfront versus up here on Pine Street, his vote is for the riverfront, but I think that...
And that park's as good lengthed as it is now?
Well, we've, I mean, we've been doing our best to get that park up to where it should be, you know, doing a little bit every year.
And I don't think you'd be here, sir, right now, if the water tower was definitely going back in the park. You wouldn't be sitting here. You wouldn't have come to the meeting last Wednesday, guaranteed. If that tower was going anywhere, anywhere else in this town, but in your neighborhood, you wouldn't be sitting here.
Just please direct your comments up here to us, all right? Please, and everyone has the right to come to every meeting and say whatever they want about anything, so.
Just on the waterfront thing, quick question. What is the access you're going to have to get to the park?
I'm sorry.
What is going to be the access to get to that park, the waterfront park? If you do it, what's the access going to be? I heard there's a bridge over and a tunnel under.
So the current plan would be a pedestrian bridge up and over the tracks, and then of course, emergency, you know, it would be gated, but there would be emergency access for rescues and whatnot. So, and again, for those of you who've been following Amtrak fencing proposal that was floating around the last couple of months, we do want to get into our regular business and everything, but I'll just give a quick update. So they had gone to the Department of State to get a review of their proposal to do a series of, you know, fence runs and gates from Reincliff to Stigerson. The Department of State, after a lot of public furor, has said, we're not going to give you a review until you go have some public meetings with these communities. They are going to do small meetings with individual communities, and then I would say over this summer sometimes, my sense, they're going to have sort of a southern one and a northern one. So maybe a Red Oak Rhineback, Tivoli meeting and something up over the county line into Columbia County. After those happen, then the Department of State will give them a review. And I know that for the Tivoli location, once the village board and I informed Amtrak about our park plans, they said, whoa, okay, wait, we're not going to do any gating or fencing at the Tivoli location until we know what your plans are. So they're going to be coming to talk to us in the next couple of weeks. I'll have our engineers who can explain the full park design and everything, and then we're going to get to sit with Amtrak and try and find some balance between their desire for safety and our desire for public, safe public access and that nothing they do interferes with our park lines. So that's the update on that. Wasn't exactly your question, last time?
My, no, my comment was, how much does that walkway over the thing go to cost?
A million dollars.
That's a million dollars.
A little less than that.
Okay. They don't have cost projections.
I just wanted to keep us on track here. Are there any other public comment on the agenda items before we move into our business? Okay. All right, trustees, we'll start with the proposed budget modifications. We went over these in the workshop. Again, this is, you know, end of the year, housekeeping to conclude our, conclude and close to closing our 2018 budget. And again, I called your attention to the big one under the F Fund, that $12,000. That's some of our invoices towards tie-in bond and also road and house and shawl for legal review. These are all expenses related to putting on that slide presentation and doing the SEACER review of the water system transfer. So we've discussed this fully. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed budget modifications?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have the, okay, this is sidewalk project, and I know this wasn't in your binders about 30 minutes ago, so I want to make sure everyone's got that. Okay. So we asked Crawford and Associates, the village engineer, to solicit, to draft specs and solicit quotes for sidewalk east of the bridge along Broadway there, and we received two proposals, and the lowest responsible bidder was Frank Vosberg &amp; Sons. This is a lump sum fee of $18,750 as a base contract, which would do 200 linear feet with an alternate of $95 per linear foot beyond 200 linear feet. I think the village is able to afford about $25,000 on this project, which will get us about 260 feet, which is further from where we are starting. It's more than halfway from our little, you know, from where we're starting to Clay Hill. The next year, we would have another 200 feet to get out to Clay Hill, so that's what we have. And is there a motion to award the sidewalk project to Frank Vosberg &amp; Sons?
I'm, I'd a second.
Okay. It's barely worth doing the roll call vote here with three of us, but I also, okay, so now we'll have the vote. Deputy Mayor, Major?
Aye.
Trustee Israedi?
Aye.
I also vote aye. And that work should happen, I'd say, within the next, well, certainly this construction season.
So Joel, how many hundred feet of sidewalk have we put in in the last couple of years?
Uh, let's see, that, that will bring us to about 1,300 feet.
Wow.
Since 2013.
Working on about walkable building.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right, that was that. Moving on to the waterfront stabilization project. Okay, again, this was a grant application that we put forth to the CFA last summer. We were unsuccessful, and we believe it's worth trying again. We had a very detailed debriefing with Department of State about how to win a few more points this round. And so what's nice about this program is it is a 75% grant with only a 25% match. Many grants are 50-50. So we're applying with a project cost of $458,000, and the local match would be estimated at $114,500. So is there a motion to authorize the grant application for waterfront stabilization projects?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
I hope we get it.
I hope we get it. Good luck, Tivoli.
I figure this one is important regardless of what happens going forward, because if you don't have the land, which is what the shoreline stabilization is about, all bets are off. I'm betting that's...
Yes. Roll call vote, Deputy Mayor, Major?
Aye.
Trustee Israedi?
Aye.
I also vote aye, and Crawford will be submitting this grant at the end of July. It's going to do. Okay, moving on to our next resolution, declaring intent to serve as lead agency for the wastewater system improvements and DCWWA wastewater system transfer project. So this is similar to what we're doing with the water system. We've split them, and the big difference, of course, is that with the sewer system, there are no large capital projects associated, like the water tank with the water system. So hopefully, this is a bit more straightforward. It's really just a matter of replacement in kind and, you know, transfer of ownership, so we don't have to do, oh yeah, we don't have to figure out where to put any giant thing like a new sewer plant, like we are doing with the new water tank, so. The Board of Trustees in the village of Tivoli has received, and there is on file with the village clerk, a Part I Environmental Assessment Form and a Coastal Assessment Form with respect to the proposed transfer of the wastewater system to the DCWWA and the initial capital projects to be undertaken. So again, these, this EAF and CAF will head over to the planning board for an LWRP consistency review at their next meeting. With that said, is there a motion to declare intent to serve as lead agency for the wastewater system?
Ooh, I'm with them.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you both. Any further discussion on this? Roll call vote, Deputy Mayor, Major?
Aye.
Trustee Israedi?
Aye.
I also vote aye. So the clerk is now able to circulate our intent to the other entities and agencies.
And just remember to sign what the EAF, we have to...
Thank you. All right. Okay, so review and determinations of the water system project. We reviewed this in the workshop, and I wanted to put forward to the board, who wants to find out where it is, that we, that we narrowed the description of the action, which is contained in the EAF and the CAF that will be sent to the planning board for the LWRP consistency. And again, as I said, the current proposal is a multi-leg park Pine Street area or a multi-leg or ground tank at the McKnight. And other than that, we have no changes to the EAF and CAF.
And we're asking the planning board to give us their read on whether the, any of those three options are consistent with our local waterfront revitalization plan.
Right, and we're doing this because they, we had some comments from them already, and they did feel that a CET or pump tank at the park parcel would not be consistent, so we are listening to them, yeah. With that said, is there a motion to revise the EAF and CAF for the water system project?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor, Major? Deputy Mayor, Major?
Aye.
Trustee Israedi?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Okay, so the planning board, as in their role as LWRP, is now going to review revised EAF and CAF for water and a first time they've seen our EAF and CAF for sewer. Okay, the next board meeting will be held Wednesday, July 18th, 2018, at 7:00 PM, with a workshop at 6:00 PM here at the historic Watts de Peister Hall. And there is a regular workshop on July 11th, 2018, at 7:00 PM. And I want to let the public know that we have scheduled a special meeting for next Tuesday night at 6:00 PM here at the Watts de Peister Hall. I'm not sure which room will be in yet. And that is so that we can continue to discuss public comments and the water system project. So that is an additional meeting into a regular meeting on the 18th, a regular workshop on the 11th, and a special meeting on Tuesday, that's the 26th of June, 6:00 PM. Moving on to committee reports, Trustee Israedi, please.
Give a brief comment on the length of service award program. We did set a lot of points for our firefighters that were awarded for 2017 year. And we had, we also sent a big check to one of our firefighters who reached the age of 65 this year as a result of the $500 that he's been earning regularly and the five years that he accumulated prior to the beginning of this program. So that's always kind of gratifying to see that they actually benefit from this program. It's still earning about 6% over its entire life. This year was particularly good year, so the funds have increased. The water report, one of my favorites. For the month of May, the Ballack Well was off, which frequently is at least a performing well. The McKnight Well was producing about 11,000 gallons per day. The Two Pots West Well was producing about 13,000 a day for most of the month. It seems to drop off on weekends. And the Five PE, PW Well was utilized for the last five days of the month at 10,000 per day. The Four PE and Ten PE Wells produced just under 20,000 gallons a day. And the Night, the Windmark Well, which is our most best-producing well, was producing early in the month about 20,000, but by the end, up to 27,000 gallons per day. No, I forgot that wrong. About 23,000 gallons per day. As a consequence, the height in the water tower, which is what creates our, the pressure at your sink, was in the 165 to 169-foot level, which is where we like it to be. Can you guess about, this is our favorite part, how many inches of rain that were in May?
3.4.
You have 50% chance of people, so... What did you say?
I said 3.4.
Four.
You know, Emily, you've come closer than anyone here. It was 3.5.
I haven't told you how the water gauge.
The really funny thing is, we just look at the April one, and the first five days were snow. So, the difference in months, right? We had two breaks in the water system, did we not?
Yes, we have, there were breaks recently.
Well, I have one listed here, actually, which was on Broadway, at the end of, very end of the month. And the water was tested at two different locations at the end of the month.
Thank you, Trustee Israedi. Trustee Schneider's not here. I will read the Tivoli Village Court Charge Volume Summonment Report, all judges covering the period of May 1st through 31st, 2018. Total charges received, 23. Total charges disposed, 29. Total money collected and remitted to the state comptroller in fines, $883. Surcharges, $875, for a total of $1,758. Trustee Murphy's not here, but if he were, he would be telling you all about... Both trustees, Schneider and Murphy, have children at the Red Hook Junior High School, which just completed eighth grade, and they're having an event tonight, which is the Muba event, so that's where they are. He would be telling you about the Tivoli Summer Rec Camp. Registrations are still open, although they will be closing soon. That program's going to start on August 6th, that Monday, run for the two weeks, starting on that Monday, the 6th. And we've expanded the program now from a half-day to sort of two-thirds of day. It's going to go from 9:00 AM to 2:30. They'll be doing lunch there, and I know they're lining up all sorts of great activities and field trips. They're going to visit the rug hooking club downstairs, and they're going to show them how to do some crafts. The American Legion's got some things planned for the kids. And so, if you have a child between five and, I believe, 12, you can find all the registration materials on the village website, document center. And kids last year had a great time. I encourage you, how many young people in your life, to bring to Tivoli the month of August? And I know that many of the other communities do their activities in July, so it will fit nicely with your summer plans. All right, Deputy Mayor, Major, please.
Briefings at the library, as always. The popular Rockin' the Gazebos series is going to be starting up next Thursday, June 24th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. A gentleman named Strobe Talbot will be performing. And I think it's kind of cool, there's Monday, July 9th, from 2:00 to 4:00, there will be representatives here from Assemblyperson Kevin Cahill's office, doing like a mobile district office, you know, so bring your questions. That's that. There are still passes available for both the Alana Historic Site and the Mid Hudson Children's Museum at the circulation desk, so you can just go and check them out and then go and give yourself some history or some little bit of science and children's stuff. Usual, you know, weekly activities of preschool story hour with Miss Penny on Tuesdays from 10:30 to 11:30. The Lego Lounge is on Wednesdays, and the Tarot Club is meeting every other Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00. And something new, which has started up on the second and fourth Fridays of the month, from 4:30 to 5:30, you can come to help maintain the Tivoli Library's plot in the community garden. So they have tools there, and you can come and hang out. And using gardening, just be sure to dress appropriately and stay hydrated. And as always, if you have trouble getting to the library, Homebound Services can bring books and materials from the Red Hook Library, so call them up. In terms of historic resources, there's a program this weekend at the Elmendorf, which is going to be super cool. The county historian, Will Tatum, will be telling riveting tales that he has pulled from the ancient documents, and they are wicked old. And it's basically court records from the Red Hook area involving Red Hook residents. So it's stuff like horse thieving or land disputes. And there will be refreshments if the, if the topic isn't enough to entice you. And then, yeah. And Montgomery Place, there aren't any events coming up, but the grounds are open some up to sunset. And, you know, go wander around the gardens, you're looking awesome. Clermont is going to be doing their Harmonies on the Hudson Outdoor Concert Series, and the first one is June 21st, 6:00 PM, featuring a duet called Moonshine Holler. And the description includes the phrase Carter Family Classics and Jug Band Stompers. So, any stomping fans, head on over. And they're going to have their Old Fashioned Independence Day, as usual, on Wednesday, July 4th. So you can go and picnic and, you know, watch fireworks over the Hudson. And what else? Cool stuff at Alana, digital audio tours. And they have an installation, this outdoor sculpture up there, which is so cool. It's this big yellow sort of spaghetti thing. So go down to the library, get the pass, go check it out. And as far as natural resources, our biggest natural resources right now are poison ivy and ticks, over crops of each. And the community launch in the bays is rebuilt, but the docks are not yet out. So if you go down there expecting to put in your boat, be prepared for a little mud. Hopefully, we'll have some updates on that soon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Major. Quite a bit of things, I'll try to move quickly through them. So today, Tivoli hosted, once again, one of the county's senior picnics over at the park. I mean, a couple hundred people, had the great pleasure of serving chicken, and it was, it was a lot of fun. We had much better weather than the last two years. I think last year was the frying pan, and the year before was the deluge. It was backwards, but today was actually breezy, cool, comfortable, a really good time. And I just, as always, have to thank our Department of Public Works, even though this is a county event, inevitably, our staff has to do quite a bit to make it ready at the park for everyone. So they did a great job once again, and a good time was had by all. And we were joined today by County Executive Malinaro, who we are going to see again on Monday morning here, because on Monday, the 25th, at 10:30, will be the dedication ceremony of the new bridge on Broadway. If you haven't heard, that's going to be dedicated to Bernard Bernie Teeger, who was a 50-year resident, he was a trustee, he was the village historian for a long time, a business owner in the village, and, and sort of single-handedly put on the Centennial in 1972, which, if you don't know, was a three-day celebration with all sorts of things that I think many people feel sort of the beginning of the return of Tivoli pride. You know, you think about 1972, the school had only closed, you know, half a decade earlier, and he was instrumental in that. So cooperating with Duchess County and the county executive, we're able to dedicate that bridge to him. There'll be a plaque going up. We're going to have a small ceremony on Monday at 10:30. It's going to be very quick, because we're going to have to close one lane of the bridge. We're going to get everyone on the north side where the plaque will be. There will be brief comments from myself, County Executive Malinaro, members of the Teeger family, and then our deputy mayor, who also happens to be the town historian, will tell you a little bit more about what Bernie meant as a historian. So it should be very sweet, and there will be some refreshments here at Village Hall on the third floor afterwards. And then we have to sort of quickly get off the bridge and open it up for traffic. So, Monday, 10:30, Bridge Dedication, we'd love to see you there. Excuse me. For the many, many Tivolians who enjoy the loop, or as they used to call it, the Big Block, that's sand stacks, you may have noticed that when you travel west and arrive at North Road, you have better sightlines now. So I just want to tell you a little bit about how that happened. It's, it was always a dangerous spot, terrible sightlines. Our former trustee, Vince Manah, got quite active and contacted me, and also I directed him to the town, because of course, it's the town of Red Hook out there. And Supervisor McKeon and Superintendent Theresa Burke got to it, and the Town of Red Hook crews shaved that entire hill back. And I think we can all agree, it's a great improvement. So I just want to thank, thank Vince Manah and the Town of Red Hook and Theresa Burke and Red Hook Highway Department for taking care of that. Let's see.
Vince used to, about every six weeks, write a letter to the Department of Transportation about the intersection at Broadway and Non-G as well. And we eventually got an entire team working on it, so...
Yes. An active citizen, for sure. Tivoli Yard Sale Day is coming up, last Saturday in July, which is the 27th? Anyone? The last Saturday in July, Tivoli Yard Sale Day, 28th. If you have not registered already, please register with the clerk. It's a $10 fee, we provide a map. And the mayor and as many trustees as he can find will be in the sun handing out the maps and greeting people at the main intersection. So, sell your stuff. And whatever you don't sell, and other items that probably aren't even worthy of Yard Sale Day, Tivoli has organized a Cleanup Day. It's going to be on Monday, August 13th. And the way this is going to work is any time from right now up until maybe the Friday before, you can contact the village clerk. You say, "I live at 12 North Road, I want to participate in the Cleanup Day." You pay a $20 fee to the village of Tivoli, and on that day, the trucks and the personnel will stop by your house and pick up your items, junk, right? Pick it up. If you have electronics on that day, they will not be picked up, but we will have personnel and a receptacle here at Village Hall. You can drive your items over, and each of those has a small fee, you know, lamps, stereos, VCRs, that sort of stuff. And if you have any white goods, large metal items, refrigerators, air conditioners, washers, dryers, those can be accommodated on our Cleanup Day for an additional fee of $20 on item. All of this is on the village website, in the document center. Under General Village Documents, you will find the first document is Cleanup Day. It's got the fee schedule and more information. So, please, 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 take advantage of this. Tivoli used to do something like this years and years ago. It's been a long time. We've brought it back. I've had great help from our little committee. And the more people that participate, the more likely it is that we can do this every year and help you all get things out. You pretty much can't beat $20 for someone to come to your house and take away your stuff. If you don't have a pickup, if you, you know, don't have people to help you load that heavy thing, just get it out to the curb. August 13th, Cleanup Day, sign up at the village clerk. I mentioned the Tivoli Rep Camp signups, please take advantage of that. And just before, on August 4th, will be our annual Tivoli Community Day over at the Memorial Park. I think most of you have been the last few years. It's a great time, games for kids, food vendors, music, and hopefully, a few other surprises and entertainments this year, August 4th. And lastly, you may remember, we had some very scary weather a month or so ago. There were tornadoes in the area, and the fire department and I want to get together and get Tivoli a siren, all right? This village used to have a siren, it went off every day at noon. This was before cell phones, before the internet, before anything, and volunteer firepersons, you know, often they hear that, they know to come. Well, we realized that on a day like that day, we really had no way of letting people know, this is, you know, "Had a tornado come to Tivoli, you know, God forbid." So we are going to look into that and get one here. And if you want to chime in on that, Tom, please do.
We went to the fire show last Thursday, spoke to the person about sirens, and they said, "Do you have the electronics that can replace what we have?" They said, "Good to call, they'll come out, they'll take a look at it." And it's all modernized, you can set it for whatever you want and stuff. So I do have a vendor that you can contact.
Great, so we're going to get together on that sooner rather than later, you know? I've had people ask, "Hey, whatever happened to that?" You know, it's nostalgic for folks to have it go off at noon every day. I don't know if they do every day, but you do need to make sure it's working. But, you know, I think we're all struck by the need to have some sort of a warning system for residents, if there's something that serious coming.
Yeah, all they knew is, you know, you could program for a certain amount of times that they blow, you know what it is. I mean, you get a thing and tell... We used to do 10 times, it blows 10 times, it's a fire, it's a structural fire. If it blew three times, it was a rescue call. So everybody knew what it was. If it stays, like, Soregany's blew there when the tornado came through, they just continuously let it blow. I mean, it wasn't up and down, it was just continuous. So they knew that was a tornado, that's what they do out in the Midwest. They just blow the siren, you know, it's, you know, it's, what do you call it? To say that it don't happen here, we can't say that anymore. It does happen here. And our chief's vehicle got bombarded with baseball-sized hail, I got pictures of it. That vehicle is damaged, it's waiting to go into the body shop to be repaired, along with... Along with, again, my son was all parked in the same place. And two more of his vehicles got damaged. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff that went on that day.
Yeah, and I just have one more thing before we go to full public comment. I just want to remind folks that in Tivoli, we contract with the Duchess County Sheriff's Office for, you know, scheduled patrols and general ongoing patrols. But if you're a resident and you have any problem, do call the Duchess County Sheriff's Office. The number is 486-3800, 3800. So whether it's a noise complaint or anything else for which you need the police, that's the department to call, and their number is 486-3800. And also, as Trustee Israedi read earlier, our code enforcement officer, Building Inspector John Fenton, has been very active. And I just want to let people know that he's in the village at least twice, sometimes three times a week. You can reach him with any manner of complaint, or I want to put up a shed, or I need a permit, or there's, you know, a violation that you think you see. You can reach him at 845-264-5247. That's 845-264-5247. Or bizio, B-I-Z-O. It's like bingo, it's easy to remember, right? B-I-Z-O at tivoli-NY.org. We're paying for him. Don't hesitate to use him. He's very good at what he does. And with that, we'd like to open the floor to public comment on any topic. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to build off of the siren, which I think is a great idea. Have we, you know, my kids are in this, you know, Mill Road and Lambs, and they have a text notification system. Have we given any thought to doing a text notification system? Or what, I mean, I don't even know what it costs. I just know that it's tremendously helpful.
Right, I've looked into it. You know, we're still trying to get people to sign up for our Gmail list. It's the truth. It's something, you know, maybe I could call over to the school district and just...
Yeah, I mean, I think it's tremendous, I mean, it is tremendously helpful from the standpoint of they send you reminders on half-days and stuff like that. And I would think, you know, water main breaks or...
Now, would 911 send anything out to residents in an area of Texas?
Well, they send it out to us. I mean, our radios go off. We do have a texting service that it's just for the firemen. We get a call, they text us, they tell us where the call is and the whole nine yards. That thing runs us about $1,100 a year for that particular program. But it's a closed type of a thing. I mean, you can set it up whatever you want, but it's, it's... You have to have PIN access to it, because in our case, there's certain information that's not available to the public. We've got hippos...
But if there's something, right, if there's...
But there aren't things out there.
Yeah, if there's something like that, I just thought that would be another... I've heard a lot of complaints about not having... I know that you're working hard to Facebook through and send it and get everything out. But, you know, my wife and I were talking about it, and we just thought, oh, maybe this would be an easy way to notify people as well if they opt in. Of course, they'd have to opt in.
Right.
Again, if we could get everybody's email address, if we could get everybody's phone number to do that.
Right, and agree.
While we're on that, Dave, with the siren and stuff, we've been kicking the idea around of putting up our electronic sign up front that'll warn if there's something coming through. The sign will have a warning thing on it, say, if people are driving by and stuff, they don't hear the siren or whatever. Or if there's something coming up, we can let you know what's going on. We're looking at that right at the second, and it's just a matter of whether, you know, what we want to spend and stuff like that on the sign.
So this is a new LED...
This is a new LED...
Signboard for the fire department where they can remotely post things. And he doesn't have to go out there with the...
Yeah, because some of us...
...key letters.
Some of these people that organizations have, like to use it, give me poems. And I can't put them up there, it can only be so many letters. I don't even know the names.
Okay.
But stuff like that.
Pete?
Are there any patching or blacktopping plans underway, especially for the neighborhood? I mean, Elizabeth and Lothrav, the entrance right on Elizabeth Drive, that's been dug up since before the winter.
Yes, we're going to patch everything as soon as we can, certainly this summer. I am currently shopping for an asphalt roller. We've identified a few that we're looking into. And, you know, I want to get us a roller so that we can do this at the most cost-effective way. You know, in the last few years, without a roller, we have, you know, hired contractors to patch things, and over time, that is not a cost-effective way. So it's all going to happen soon. I'm actually trying to buy a roller right now, and then when we have it, we can do it all ourselves. Sorry it hasn't happened sooner, but it's certainly on the to-do list for this season. And if you see any used rollers that look good, please let me know.
Indeed.
Yeah. Any other comments? Other comments from the floor? Trustees? Okay, thank you all very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Aye, 7:56, we are adjourned. Thank you everyone very much for being here.